All right. All right, good evening. This is February 1st, Wednesday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. This is District 96 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsati.
President.
Chris Gunn.
Here.
Mr. Marhol.
Here.
Mr. Bearehead.
Here.
Ms. Murphy, here. And Mr. Hunt.
Here. All right. First on our agenda is Welcome to Hollywood School by Principal Kim Hefner.
As smooth as I used to be. Well, happy Wednesday, and I just want to welcome you all to Hollywood. It's a challenging time of year. January and February are dark months. They're long, but it's also very exciting. In mid-January, we -- the students went through their benchmark testing. So that is the first halfway through the year that we're able to see their growth. And we had such wonderful conversations last -- earlier this week, I guess, on Monday, just about student growth. And we've seen it on map. We've seen it with the new iReady program. Teachers are becoming more familiar with the program. They're learning more of the tools every day. The administrators had professional development with iReady today, and so we're more -- learning more and more about how to support and coach them. So thank you so much for that resource. Thank you for the time that you give to our learning community. It's very much appreciated. And just thank you for being here this evening. You're helping all of us work so much better. We've got resources in place. We've got facilities, and it's because of the work that you guys have done. Thank you very much. Oh, and personally, thank you for approving the interim for me. So I was out about six weeks with my first knee, so I've got a new knee over here. And this one went out over winter break, but I'm going to get a new one on February 16th. And just that provides so much continuity. We work well together. The community feels supported, and it's just been -- it eases my mind every single day. So, thank you.
And Kim is going to excuse herself not to stay for the whole meeting.
Kim, it's good to have you back. Understand why you have other things to attend to. All right. Next item on our agenda is a public comment. All right. First, we have Glenn Klecker of Hollywood.
Glenn Klecker, 69-year resident of Hollywood, graduate of Hollywood School, graduate of Hauser School. Want to thank the board for all that they've been trying to do to make it safer for the students, to give them a good place to play. You've changed the plan a couple of times, but is this your best plan? I know you're financially well off. Maybe we could do even better. There are buildings that put second stories up. You could build a 20-foot-high structure and have the entire area for play on the second floor with a walkway from the second floor from the school for handicapped kids to get there or whatever, with a ramp and everything. I know it's going to be more money, but have you also checked -- I heard the comments saying, "Oh, we don't have to provide parking for everybody. They can go out on the street." Why not provide the parking if you have the space on the entire level on the first floor? I know Riverside is looking for additional parking spots for their downtown district. They're looking for places that they could put energy charging for electric cars and all that. Have you contacted, would they be willing to contribute towards it? Has solar power been investigated? Can we do that? I know it'd be more expensive, too, for additional security cameras or whatever, for a structure or whatever. But they now make concrete that's porous. The water can flow right through the concrete. I'm just saying, check all the options before you actually approve a plan. I know it's not going to be a big decision between grass and turf or whatever, but that's people's choice. But I know for 60 years, it's the exact same field that I played on. And when we went to school and we had graduation there, the cars parked on that field. It destroyed that ground. I mean, if it rained, it was like a mud puddle. So I know nothing's been done to it. So I know you're looking for safety and improvement, which I give you all compliments to. It's a 60-year project. I'm sure it's not going to be done overnight, but look for the best option. Take a look at everything. Thank you.
You, Mr. Klecker. All right. At this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, then we will get right into committee reports. First one listed is Facilities.
Thanks, Dan. Actually, we have DLA here to present the revamped and Central Hauser campus plan. This plan was also presented to the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Committee as a pre-meeting, essentially, an opportunity to have some discussion and get some input from them, and that went really well. And there's actually two plans in your agenda today. There's the plan from November, and then the revamped plan that was developed this year, and it was developed in light of some previous input from the village as well. And now I should turn it over to Ryan and Steve.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me back. As Joel said, as we do, as we're moving into design development drawings, looking at construction document drawings and the engineering of that, we reach out to the village, you know, go through our engineering processes, and through that, we find things that work and things that don't work. So, and in doing that, we had met with the village arborist. I think the previous plan that you are looking at, hopefully, showed a recreation space in the rear of the two schools at about 51,000 square feet. It also showed a new playground at the front of Central, and we were hoping to redevelop that. It seemed like that there was the available space for that. A couple of concerns that we had from the very beginning were the old trees that are important to the community, important to the school. It turns out that those -- the drip edge, to use sort of technical terms, reaches so far that we really cannot develop that area. So what that forces us to do is look again at putting that playground at the rear of the school. So the second plan that you'll see is an iteration of that, something that works well for the village. It gives us -- our current field right now at Hauser is about 34,000 square feet, a little over that. The field that you're looking at and the design has about 41,000 square feet, so more, but a reduction from what we hoped for. It also gives a playground that is about 63 -- I'm sorry, 6,300 square feet for Central and Hauser, but primarily for Central. So I'll kind of point these things out here. So here's the new playground and the new recreation field. So the two plans are very similar. The big difference is that you'll see that the playground is now at the rear and a little bit less green space. There's a few other parameters that we really needed to address that we were in the previous plan, fire access. So that, again, limits us a little bit with 18 feet that we need to provide so we have clear and consistent access for the fire department around the building. So those are really the big changes. In meeting with the fire department, the village arborist, we wanted to -- in engaging with the administration at the village, we wanted to have a pre-meeting for planning and zoning to get their feedback. So we did that about a week ago. It was very productive. They liked the plan that we were trying to engage green space and prioritize that and safety for the children. We did learn that a reduction in parking that we were proposing is something that they would entertain, so that was positive as well. So now we're presenting this plan to you for your feedback and for questions and comments, but it seems like a good plan that will work in terms of an engineering perspective. There's a couple of things that we'll be looking at with existing fencing. Technically, all of this sort of falls -- it's a little bit of a strange lot, and it's got two front yards or street yards, if you will. So all of this fencing that we would propose around the recreation field, also separating parking and the play, is something that would require variance from planning and zoning. So there was some mixed feedback on that. There was definitely some input that they'd like to reduce the fencing around the recreation field, so that's something that, you know, we need to talk about and get your input on. So anywhere that we can do that, I think that they would look on that favorably. There were some discussions about the number of walkways that we provided. So we were much like the plan that you looked at before. You're providing three sort of entrances into the site, this being the primary one for bicyclists and pedestrians coming into the site, working through the site. I think their position is that they would like to reduce the amount of hardscape and pervious materials that we're providing. We are providing permeable pavers primarily around the school here. So we're trying to balance all of these things. So I think there was some general inquiry and feedback that if we can, you know, reduce some of the pervious, increase some of the imperv -- I'm sorry, other way. Reduce some of the impervious, increase some of the pervious, that would be more favorable to them. So that was the general feedback, and, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions about the revised plan. I know we've talked about it in the facilities a little bit, so I know that Joel has seen this, and -- but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And also share that we shared it at a Hauser PTO meeting and Central PTO meeting, that that was something that we kind of had on the books, and actually it turned out the timing of it was in advance of this meeting. The feedback was really pretty minimal. I think just an appreciation that there's an effort to make these improvements. And I would say from a Hauser perspective, that question came up about when will the decision be made about turf versus natural surface.
That was a question.
Yeah.
I'll just ask, you know, I'll jump in, sorry. Fencing around the recre -- why would the fencing around the recreational field be a concern? Is it appearance? Is it like?
I think it's appearance. I mean, typical we would provide would be from not only a cost perspective, but it would be a six-foot chain link fence. We could coat that. We would propose to coat that in PVC, so it's a little bit nicer looking. A six-foot fence is not -- I mean, any fence in the street yard is not per-village ordinance. Four-foot fence is typical. Six-foot fence is kind of over and above. So I think that that is anywhere that they -- and I'll speak for the village here, I guess, for a minute. Anywhere that that's -- that view down the street can be not encumbered by fencing is something that is favorable to them. So I think that's why the pushback. Again, this is a unique situation, a unique lot, but I think that there's, you know, that was the conversation.
So I guess my question, because I had the same question, is like, so are they saying no fence at all, or are they saying?
The process would be, we would come back to them with their comments, with your comments, make a proposal, and they would make a recommendation to the village board. And that would be the approval.
I mean, my personal -- I don't know if you were going to say something.
No, well, what I was to add to what Ryan just said is, if you remember, at Ames, there was originally a fence proposed to be at the edge of the sidewalk, and that ended up being pulled back to be even with the front of the building.
Okay.
And it was also limited at four -- to four feet. So six feet in terms of the ordinances, I'm trying to pick my words carefully, is really not seen at all favorably. But, and I have to be honest here, I'm on planning and zoning.
Right, right.
I recused myself for that discussion, but the members of planning and zoning who were able to contribute and did appropriately were -- had differing opinions, and so it comes down to when we take all the comments as a whole and our presentation of asking for variances. I'm being deliberately vague a little bit, but fences in the front yard, probably a no-go.
Yeah.
Being more collaborative with the rules may help.
And I guess I'm just sort of looking at it as like from a safety perspective. I mean, all our playgrounds have fences. I mean.
There's currently a fence there.
Pardon?
There's currently a fence there.
Right, yeah.
Ryan, when you talk about the six-foot, can you --
Sure.
The six-foot fence would go.
There's already a fence there.
Around the -- not on the inside, but there's.
Oh, so we would be fencing like up against the parking lot, too.
Along the street there.
Correct. So we're proposing a six-foot fence around, actually, three sides.
There's fence back.
On the two side.
So right now, there's a fence along here.
Right.
Nothing pertains, but along here as well. So we would be proposing a six-foot fence around three sides of the recreation field and then a fence along this walkway at four feet to separate from the parking lot.
So, I mean, there was concern voiced about both of those fences, but primarily and most loudly about this six-foot fence.
The fence along the property line to the north and the one along the church, that was not really discussed, and I don't think that was seen as an issue, and that's similar to Ames where we put in a taller fence to help out with the neighbor.
Yeah.
So it's really that fence along.
The road.
The road, yes.
Isn't there a fence there already?
I'm pretty confident.
There is not.
I can't walk through that area when I.
There's a lot of bushes.
There's a big hedge.
I feel like I have walked through those bushes, so I don't know.
I have. It's not easy, but yes.
Yeah, I have, like, memories of it.
Actually, because we've talked about them from a security concern perspective.
Yeah.
The schools have actually been encouraged to take down hedges and that kind of thing. So we.
The bushes can't see.
Right, yeah, because they block.
So there is not a fence there?
There is not a fence around the recreation field currently.
But then, so the side that's facing, given the orientation of the ball field, I would imagine, you know, that balls maybe hit that way. Is that why we're at six feet? Is that, or is that even going to be high enough, I guess?
It'll be, it'll be high enough.
But that one is not in dispute. The village does not have an issue with that, or the planning commission?
This fence, they do have an issue with.
So all of it?
All of it, yeah.
All of it, okay.
I mean, it was mixed. Some would like to see it at four feet and thought that it was a, you know, good safety measure, and some did not want any fence and thought that there wasn't one existing and didn't need to be one.
So just along the road is what you're saying? Is the biggest contention?
It's really the one along the road, and there is a fence around the playground, Ryan.
Yeah, I didn't mention that.
And that was, seemed to be generally accepted by planning and zoning. That wasn't -- yes, there were varying opinions, but in general, majority was okay with that one.
But I guess I could have a question.
So that doesn't go against what you just talked about with playground.
So I guess, but I guess the question is though, are we going to limit the kids just to the playground, or are we going to open the field up to them to play?
They would play on the playground and the field.
Yeah, I guess.
But the, like, it's kind of like at Ames, like, they play actually in the grassy area in front of the fence. They'll play kickball and that kind of thing, not in the fence.
I guess, I'm just wondering, what is the village's thoughts on like, if the kids are playing in that field? I mean, and Joel, I don't know if you can answer this without being too vague, but.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, but, but the kids play in the field, and then like balls and things go into the street. I mean, that seems like a, not only a safety issue for the kids, but also a safety issue from a traffic perspective.
Yeah.
I mean, I see, if I saw a kid run in front of it, I can assure you, I'd be swerving and be hitting the curb.
Which I guess apparently is where we're at now, although there are hedges there. So is that, I mean, have we heard reports of that?
We're being encouraged to take it down.
Understood.
You're going to have to take, I mean, can we even leave the hedges there?
No.
No. I mean, they're going to have to, all that stuff's going to have to be cut down.
That would have to be.
We're not going to replant a bunch of that stuff as.
I mean, the proposal for the fence is for those reasons. I mean, the safety concern and, you know, the idea that the field would be better and more regularly used than it is now. I mean, I wish I can't speak for the neighborhood or the school, but I think the use is intermittent, as I understand it, and we hope for that not to be the case.
And it's middle, it's intermittent, and it's middle school PE primarily. And what we're talking about is having Central working out the Hauser schedule in such a way that that field and the play structure area are available to Central students for their lunch period recess. So.
Correct.
You would have younger children playing on that field than what is happening now.
And this isn't only going to, I mean, this, it's not like when school ends, this field doesn't get used.
Yeah.
So there's still safety concerns beyond.
Right.
Our use of it.
Exactly.
And for exactly your point, it is a community safety issue, in my opinion.
Will it be accessible after hours, though? Would that be our intent?
Yeah, it's an open field.
I'm going to push back on that.
If we have fences all around it, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we don't lock them off.
Yeah.
I'm going to push back on what you just said in that there's no fences around the big ballpark and the long common play areas.
And I could maybe argue that there should be, living across the street.
But.
The amount of almost accidents I've seen in the streets.
There are plenty of playgrounds where.
And I play softball. We hit cars almost every single game. It is stupid that we don't have a fence on the back lot around, that's just my opinion. I don't feel the same way about fences as other people.
But I get why there is, like, it would not be very pretty to have a large fence around a big ballpark. But yeah, I think, I think we're just butting up between some safety concerns and, you know, like, the community design.
I guess I, my personal opinion, I'm less concerned about a baseball, kid hitting a homerun, baseball hitting the street.
There's always going to be playing real baseball at this field. You know, this is the size of it.
I understand, I mean, I know where you're coming from, okay. But, but I guess I'm more concerned about kids just playing, like, whether soccer, kickball, or just even running around. It's just, I can't see us not putting up a fence. I mean, that just, from a safety perspective, that just almost seems irresponsible on our part to not even put a fence up.
Yeah. I almost feel like, also, if I were there watching children play, like, I would get, if there weren't a fence there, I'd get nervous for them to go that far. So I almost feel like we would be limiting the space that they would be using because you're getting close to a street. I mean, I could see a four-foot fence being okay. I don't think it's there to like protect balls or something from flying out, but I do feel like some sort of.
And that's what we've done here.
Yeah.
At Ames, the shorter fence.
Yeah, I feel like that would be very appropriate, in my opinion. I echo what you're saying, I just think it's a safety issue.
I do think we, there is some space to pull back from the road, which was a concern as well, and not follow the green space and the sidewalk so closely, so that might be a good compromise offer.
In terms of, though, the previous design had the ball field in a different orientation, and it also had the infield not overlapping the soccer field.
Correct.
So I'm wondering how that works. Does that tie our hands to one kind of turf or another, or are there any kind of seams that are potential hazards there?
No, it doesn't tie us to one particular grass or turf, if that's what you're asking. Either can be done. It's really a function of space that we have. You know, with the previous, we had a little more space. I guess the thought was, and what made this, in our minds, an okay design, is that this is primarily a PE recreation field that's going to be used for school. At the times when there's going to be a Little League game or a soccer game, those would be scheduled, so they wouldn't necessarily overlap.
Right, but I guess in particular, where you see the infield that's like takes up the majority of the soccer field now, I mean, so you're just going to have dirt there?
No. It would just be striped. It would be, you know, consistent turf and or grass.
Yeah.
And it would just be striped with an overlapping field. So it's actually pretty common.
So how do you have infield grass, then? Or, excuse me, not infield grass, infield dirt, or maybe it's just not there?
There was never any.
Yeah, it would just be turf. It would just be striped.
No?
No dirt.
Okay.
Yeah. Only a difference in, in, if we get into this, it's a difference in type of turf that you use in like the infield versus the outfield and at the baseline. So it's got a different density to it, but, and a different color, but it would be all turf, not dirt and or grass.
Right, and that's not any kind of tripping hazard or any kind of.
It's super common.
No, it's, yeah, it's part of a common design.
And then if we go grass, though, you could just do grass.
We could just do grass. I mean, we could incorporate dirt. We could, you know, add, you know, the pitching mound. Those are, I mean, discussions we have. There's different approaches to that, but it would be just grass and would be striped in an overlapping fashion like you're seeing.
In terms of where the playground is currently for Central and would be afterward, what are the, if we're not having the playground there, what's going to happen with that land?
Question, still a discussion that I think that we need to have. I mean, there are a few options. It could be, you know, we could maintain and or replace that equipment in place. The footprint really cannot be extended at all and hope to save those trees. I think we've got two 80-year-old trees and 100-year-old tree, so any development would impact those. We could abandon that playground, eliminate that equipment, and it could be, you know, a reading circle, gathering space that, you know, there's a couple in front of Central and Hauser. It'd be well-suited for that. So those are, you know, discussions I think we still need to have.
So Ryan, you want to talk about the next steps if there are.
I was just going to say, next steps would be, we will, would like to submit back to planning and zoning with some further engineering, your comments, you know, their comments as well with a design proposal. We would submit that mid-February for a March planning and zoning meeting. So that would be an official meeting where we would, this is our proposal. We would like your recommendation and comments and hope to move on to a village board approval.
After that meeting?
Correct.
Like, that would kind of be the final.
Yeah, so March would be planning and zoning, and then we would, the next month or possibly two weeks would be the village board for approval.
Planning and zoning is a recommending body, and the village has final.
Yeah, full authority, yeah.
So is another facility advisory committee scheduled with Joel and David?
Correct.
Next week. So we'd review the feedback from tonight, and you'd take it to, back to zoning and planning, back to the village, and then it would come back to the Board of Education for additional steps. I mean, the turf, grass decisions still need to be made.
I was just going to say, when does that conversation take place?
Soon, soon. They're going to want to know. It's, it makes a difference in the engineering, as we've talked about, you know, over the course of this. You know, when we, we don't have to have all the engineering figured out to resubmit to planning and zoning, but it is a question that was asked and one that we will need to address in March. So, meaning our submittal is usually about three to four weeks prior to. So, I mean, if we need a discussion in February, then that would, that would be good timing.
Ryan, can you remind us when we have to start submitting for stormwater and through both the village and the Water Reclamation District?
As soon as possible. I mean, you know, the process is long. So as soon as we have approval from planning and zoning and approval from the school board, then we would complete the engineering drawings and submit right away. So we're looking at a spring '24 start, so we want to be as in front of that process as possible. So that can be, you know, six to eight months sometimes for the review process. So we're tracking, and we're in good shape, but we're at the point where we need to make some decisions and, you know, make some submittals.
So I'm sorry to go back on this, but this is.
Sure.
One question that I had thought of and hadn't asked yet. So given the difference in the two plans and that we now have the central playground in the back there, I mean, what are we losing from that field other than the obvious length?
Just the length.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's it. I mean, the difference is, I think you're 51,000 square feet, and now we're at about 41,000 square feet, so about 10,000 square feet. It gives us a little bit of green buffer zone that is going to be necessary for fire access. It also, you know, allows for a gathering space outside classroom if wanted, and then obviously the playground as well. This is a little over 6,000 square feet. So, which is, to give you an idea, Hollywood is about 5,000 square feet. Ames is a little over 7,000 square feet, so it seemed like that was the right place to be for the size of Central.
Yeah. So what was the issue with the sidewalks?
I think it was, you know, a question about how much impervious surface that we're providing and balancing that. So I think. You know, right now, this is a granite path along this north fence line, and there's a question, could that be granite again? It's got some maintenance issues with granite, so, I mean, it's not what we would recommend.
Yeah, it's not ideal.
If we're going to develop this space. What we're trying to do is provide the best maintainable area and then balance the impervious-pervious discussion with some permeable pavers, some stormwater retention and some of those things. So hopefully we can, you know, make everybody happy.
Yeah.
So, but that was the concern. So that was, that was the discussion. This one as well, it was a question of whether or not that would be heavily used by students and whether or not there were families that lived in that direction that would be coming into the school that way. And, you know, could that be reduced? Perhaps this, this sidewalk was not necessary. We feel like this is very necessary. In meeting with the school and Pete. In meeting with the school and, and Pete, it seemed like that is gonna be a main thoroughfare, isn't a main thoroughfare already, for Central kids coming out to play, and would be even more so if they utilize this for pickup and drop-off, which we understood that they, they might more frequently than Hauser, and then certainly going to the playground, which is now located at the rear.
Yeah.
So we wanna make sure that we make that a safe, you know, safe passage.
Yeah, no, I agree, I mean, just, when I originally looked at it, it makes total sense. I don't see how you eliminate any of those sidewalk spaces, so it, can you, can you make a walking path an impervious surface, or is there something with that, like, you couldn't?
I mean, you, you can, I mean, you, we, we are doing permeable pavers here.
Yeah, oh, I get, yeah, that's a good point.
So we're, again, we're just trying to balance all that, permeable pavers come at a, at a premium of cost. And it's not so much the, the paver itself, but all of the subsurface infrastructure, the stone, the drainage that's required, so it doesn't hold water, especially by the building, it drains it away. So we're just trying to, to do the entire site in permeable pavers, I don't think would be cost-effective.
No. So just to be blunt, I appreciate you trying to make everybody happy, but I don't think we're gonna make everybody happy.
Well, I know, yeah. I realize that.
I think, I think we need to, I think we need to go with the right, I mean, just, I think we need to go with what we feel we need for our purposes and our maintenance costs and the longevity of this project, and we can let the village say no, and then we can have that discussion, but how much would we even really gain? Or how much are we losing by not having those walkway space? I mean, it just doesn't seem like.
Well, there's, there's a village ordinance that requires a, a green buffer zone of ten feet, and we're providing it in, in most places. I mean, this is not so much an issue, but here, where there's a residence abutting, a parking lot, I mean, that's one that is, is definitely identified, so that would be a variation. You know, we're doing it for safety reason, and we're constrained by, you know, park, you know, everything's, you pull one string and the other one, you know, goes the other direction.
I feel like the, that one is just gonna drive us pedestrian traffic into the parking lot.
Yeah, and, and, and this is my thought, too, based on what we've done at Ames, I mean, we, we've built it on Ames, and then we've heard from the neighbors that because of the, because of, like, what we were required to do, they weren't pleased with it, they wanted more privacy, they wanted, like, higher things. So, I mean, I agree with you completely, Wes, that we, we go forward with what is best for, I think, for the school district and have the village say no to us.
The sidewalk discussion of planning and zoning was not a unanimous thought process that was opposed to that sidewalk that's along the, the church property. So that's something that we discussed afterwards and will. The planning and zoning was more interested, perhaps, in some reconfiguration and changing the size and number of the, the parking islands to, to be bigger. And allowing some reconfiguration there that might instead get rid of the walkway through the center of the lot, and therefore allow us to push both to the church side and to that center, you have a better, better term for it, but that center gangway between the parking lot and the, the field.
Right, you know, that's, that's a really good point I didn't bring up, is that, that was another part of the discussion. This, this walkway was questioned or discussed. There's also an ordinance that off-street parking requires, for every five spots, you need one green space island, and it's about eight by twenty. You also are required to plant a shade tree in that island, but it's very difficult for a shade tree to survive in that size of an island, which I think they're aware of. And so what they said is if we can maybe, you know, reduce this center parking, I'm sorry, center sidewalk, and merge those islands into a larger island, one larger island or several larger islands, it would be better for a tree to survive, and it would be, you know, variance that they would, you know, be willing to get behind, so.
So what do you do with the walkway, though?
The walkway?
People aren't gonna go all the way to the, people just aren't gonna do that, so.
You know, I, that's, I, my point was when we came.
Get out of my car, we'll go straight to the village, and I'm gonna walk all the way over to the side.
That's most parking lots.
Yeah, so then, so what difference does it make?
Look at, look at the Ames parking lot.
So what difference does it make? Why are we, I just, it just feels petty.
Because you let, you crunch that down, and then you can distribute that space to green.
Okay.
I guess I, I do have a, one question is, what's, I mean, I know what the difference is between permeable and impermeable, like, but aesthetically, what's the difference? Why is there even?
I think it's just a, I mean, I speak for the village, I mean, I think in terms of green space, I mean, that's an obvious difference between asphalt or concrete.
Right.
You know, they are pushing the, the green space, the village was founded on it, so it's one of their sort of guiding principles. Yeah, I mean, aesthetically, the difference is, you know, your, your parking lots are, they gain heat, you know, there's things to be considered about that, that's the reason for the shade trees, you know, that, that mitigates that to some degree. So, again, all these things are sort of a balancing act of, of making them all work, especially when you're constrained to the space like we are, so.
Dave, did that answer your question, or were you looking for? Were you concerned more about the aesthetics of asphalt versus permeable?
I guess I was just trying to understand more of the rationale, why, why is the zoning commission concerned about the differences between the two?
Oh, it's planning and zoning, plus it's a general metropolitan issue.
Right, yeah, I mean, you, you answered that.
Was that a good, okay, all right.
On the fence height, is there, what, what would, so you're recommending six, is there a reason to recommending six over four?
The reason to recommend six is, you know, I mean, kick a ball, you know, most kids can kick a ball for, four feet, you know, and, and a baseball could obviously go over six feet, so we're trying to, again, balance that. We know four feet's the general ordinance for, for fences, we know we're in the street yard, so we're outside of that ordinance anyway. It's a, you know, a safety recommendation, I mean, again, a compromise could be, it's, it's not gonna stop the baseball, but it could stop the soccer ball, you know, at a four-foot-high fence and pull it in from the sidewalk. That could be a good, you know, compromise proposal.
I mean, that's the way I, I look at the, the fence, is it, not only, I mean, I said, I'm less concerned about, I mean, I think we need to consider the, the traffic, I mean, but I'm less, the fence is gonna slow kids down, because if a ball goes out there, kids are gonna go running, I mean, and they're not necessarily gonna look, I mean, we all have kids.
No, they're, they're not gonna look.
Right, they're not gonna look, all right, exactly. And so, this fence will slow them down, that's, and I don't want one of our kids chasing after something during school hours or after-school hours, chasing after something and end up in the street, because, so.
And I mean, for the, for the, I don't know what your, the full length of that field is, but I mean, maybe some of those middle schoolers could crank one out there, but like, the elementary school kids aren't.
Right, but, but it doesn't mean they're gonna be playing up by the school, I mean, we're talking, I mean, it could be playing closer to the street, and we don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what they're doing for P E, and I don't thi, this field is not currently used for anything other, like, any kind of outside recreational activities, right?
I think there is some Little League or something that uses it.
Like kindergarten, Little League, yeah.
T-ball.
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 Yeah.
Has, has used it on and off, I don't know what they currently.
It did last summer.
They did.
But like, soccer doesn't play there, and like, the Rockets don't play there, and like, nothing like major is really going on here. Yeah, our own soccer team does, it's all, it's mainly just P E, like, in-school use. I mean, it seems like, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I think the fence that we put up at Ames looks really nice.
I think that's, that's what they would prefer to see versus the chain link.
Yeah, I would agree, if, if we could get away with that.
Costly, that's.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll spend a little extra money if we can get a fence.
Yeah, I would, I agree with that.
Yeah.
No, I completely agree with that.
I agree with the aesthetics, I just don't agree with not having a fence because of aesthetics, we can just buy a nice fence.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
We're interested in hearing how much difference that would be.
Cost-wise?
Yeah.
No, I, I would be two, but in the same token, we need to find a compromise, I mean, chain links, I, I, I don't know, I just got a fence replaced, so I know chain links are the cheapest, I don't like a chain link sign, I think we should put one up, but let's find a compromise.
Especially on the road, though.
Right.
I mean, 'cause currently on that north side, there is a chain link, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I mean, and you can barely, you know, like.
A really tall one, too.
Yeah.
It's more than six feet, I'm pretty sure.
It is.
What did you mention about on the chain link, though, Pete, he said PVC?
Um, we were proposing, like, a PVC coated, it's like a plastic-coated chain link, you ever seen, like, the, the black or the green? I think they have them in the village.
Is it the ones that have, like, the weaving in it?
No, no, it's the, it's the entire.
The fence out by RB.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like, all, fabric, the pole, everything is coated in a, like, a rubberized plastic.
So it just looks black rather than galvanized, so it looks black rather than silver.
Right.
I see, okay. 'Cause I don't think this fence is ugly.
And that's the black coated.
No, I'm gonna tolerate that.
But I wonder if then adding that on to the chain link, the PVC gets you at about the same price range as something like the Ames or Hollywood fence?
It is a little more expensive, yeah. I don't think it does anything for the village's favor in terms of a chain link fence.
Right.
But that's all, yeah.
I mean, I think that we prefer to see the, the wrought iron style, which is what we put here in, at Ames as well.
But this is, this is zoning and planning's opinion, this is not going in front of any of the trustees, we don't have any of the trustees who is the voting body on this, think about it, so that'll be interesting to get another seven voices to the table.
But I guess the, the bottom line is, I don't think we can have a playground without a fence, we have to, we have to have a fence.
We can, we can vicker about what type of fence, but as long as we get, I think, I'm more concerned about getting a fence, and then we can figure out what type of fence.
Primarily along the street?
Yeah.
Is your concern, okay.
I've heard any concerns from staff or principals about the, the shorter fence, you know, I think it, it creates a barrier to the street for the kids.
Would there, would there be any issues with it in the parking lot?
Yeah.
From the staff's perspective?
You know, we're gonna take this back and, and do some more visioning sessions directly with the staff, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the P E staff directly, and then the teams have looked at that, and they've had some feedback, which I, I've passed along, but we're gonna go back and kinda do a more specific, like, revisioning, they've, they've looked at the space before, but now it's sort of the idea that, you know, we know where the playground structure's gonna go. So like, that fence to the parking lot, that's a good question, I, I don't know.
'Cause it, yeah, I don't know, I mean, with P, I keep looking at it like it's an actual field, but with P E, it could be any kind of activities, it's not gonna be.
And, and the reason I say I don't know is because we're, we're very geared toward, the cars should not leave the parking lot during children's instructional time or recess time, you know, so, right now, as you know, the children at Central just play right up near the cars, but the cars aren't going anywhere. So, does that area need to be fenced between the parking lot and the field? That seems like a good idea, but again, it's not fenced now, but again, it's mostly just middle schoolers that are using it, and the Central kids are playing right on the parking lot, so.
So less of a safety concern there, because we can control the parking lot, we can't control the traffic in the street.
We can control, we can control staff behavior when children are out playing.
And that would, that's just gonna be staff parking.
Yeah.
Purely.
It does cha, you know, it changes, though, like, for an evening event, like, someone's just saying, oh, you know, you pick up your children after basketball practice, it's dark, so people do seem to park on the field for certain events, I don't know, I don't know who decides when we change our parking configuration for evening events, but we seem to do that magically.
I think it's very organic.
Yes.
Yeah, I think people just, some of the person pulls in.
So a fence would, a fence would protect the field, is what the fence would do.
It would, I mean, yes, both kids and the field.
So would that six-inch curb.
And, yes, it would be a raised sidewalk, it would not be at the same level as the asphalt as it is now, you would have a six-inch raised sidewalk and curb.
Yeah. So I think that's a good question to take back to the P E department, take back to our teachers, central teachers who are gonna be supervising recess.
I think if it's a concern that would inhibit the design going forward, there are ways that we might be able to compromise and reduce, you know, we're showing. You know, separation, a fence here between parking and play, we also have a fence fencing off the recreation field. I mean, both of those, I don't know, that's a discussion we could have, same thing for the north side, we've got that existing fence that will remain. We were proposing, as we typically do, fencing the recreation field, but again, that is two fences, and that's a discussion that we could continue to have, that might be a compromise and reduction that, that might make sense.
Yeah, I feel like there's a lot of avenues to have those conversations, to try to compromise and, you know, appease both parties. I mean, I, I quite honestly feel pretty, like, this is a pretty positive step forward, as opposed to, I mean, we, we could've gotten feedback that we were just way off, and, you know, so, that's what, so I'm feeling like, this is a, that was probably a good meeting, and now we just, you know, we're gonna have to make some accommodations.
All right.
Based on village ordinance and village, you know, planning, so I, I feel like we're in a good situation to move forward with that, I mean, that's what it sounds like to me. As long as, you know, like, we all feel, I don't know if we all feel strongly about a fence on that roadside, but that's something, you know, that might be an issue, but I mean, we can navigate that.
It's an issue for me, I mean, it's on the wrong road, it's an issue for me, but I mean, you're right, this is, it's, we're negotiating, but that's, for me, quite frankly, a non-negotiable, there has to be a fence there.
I agree with you, Dave, I think where the current fence is, so I guess this would be like, the north side and the east side, or the left and the top, I, I could probably be, if it's gonna be a raised sidewalk, and we're not super concerned about kids running into the parking lot, and we can control the parking lot, I, I'd be less inclined to put my foot on the ground with a fence there. And if we, I mean, if we, if the sidewalks were, I don't know, I, I don't know that I, I don't see how you could take away any of those walkways, so if we just need to spend a little bit more on, like, some impervious surface or something like that, like, if we just need to, I don't know, throwing out numbers, we need to throw out another million bucks so that we can get impervious service and fence, like, let's just do that. So I think it, it'll just depend on, I guess, what variances that they're willing to give us, and then why they're willing, like, if it's a, we'll give it to you, but under the condition that it's this type of fence, or something like that, then I, I think I could tolerate that.
That park, that walkway in the middle of the parking lot, though, I mean, I feel like that, hearing what they were saying, I mean, as long as they're.
Other than that one. I, I was actually thinking, the two on the field and the far side, not the one, yeah.
The one in the middle, I can see if, if we need to play around there and remove that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is primarily during school hours, a staff parking lot, adults should be able to navigate the parking lot, as long as there are walkways on each side for the children who are not coming in through.
The parking lot.
They're not being parked, and then, you know.
Right.
At least they're coming in and they have places to, like, that would be my main concern. So the one in the middle, while that would be great to have, I don't, I mean, I've seen parking lots where they have those and nobody uses them anyway.
Sure.
So, I, that's something I would think we could, you know, make some accommodations there personally, as long as we're not missing, like, the other three major ones, where, you know, there will be a lot of traffic, foot, foot and bike traffic coming through that way.
Stephanie, you've been real quiet.
The fence, I mean, I'm not as famili, I, I do not yet have a child or a child that goes to Central or Hauser, so I'm not as familiar with what the day-to-day looks like, other than hearing from all of you and, and various meetings about some of the challenges, but yeah, I would be very, I actually similarly thought that there was a fence back there along the road, I didn't realize there were hedges, but I knew there was something that was creating an obstruction, and absolutely, I mean, similar to Dave, that's kind of a non-negotiable, I'm open to, you know, we have a nice, you know, four-foot fence, or whatever's gonna primarily keep the safety of the children. I know a six-foot would also for the recreational usage of the balls, et cetera, but, and then, yeah, similar to what Linda was saying with that, I was actually thinking about, I think they have one at Target, and everybody just walks along it on the other side of it. Everybody just wa, like, it's right here, and, and I just see, and I think I've done it, too, with my kids, where I'm just, like, walking here, and it's right there.
I've also walked down it, and it's actually nice. It feels safer. I've done both, I mean, admittedly.
Yes, I mean, it is nice to have, that would be, you know, it's smart.
But I understand.
Right, but if that's, if we're talking about what areas we'd have to give and take and negotiate, I think that would be another area that I don't feel as strongly about, but the fence on the back, I, I feel strongly about.
Makes sense.[1750.34]
Does that help?
Just wanna make sure you said your piece.
Thanks.
And quite honestly, this is like seven million times better than what is back there right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish we could spend a hundred million dollars and do something amazing, like insanely amazing, but this is, I mean, the quality of the outdoor experience is going to be vastly improved. I mean, yeah. So if we have to make some accommodations here and there, and it's not 100% perfect, like in our, you know, and what we would love to have, I still think it's, it's, you know, it's pretty nice.
I think when we first looked at it, I think you had said, like, there's nothing visually or structurally that tells you what to do. If you were on a bike, if you are walking, or if you drove in, like, you know, like,
It's, you don't know where to be.
Get inside somehow safely, you know, so, yeah.
When I would attend events at Hauser Central, you would park, and then there would be times you were like locked in, because nobody knows what they're doing back there.
Yeah.
Well, for like, you know, big.
Like a concert.
Yeah, people just kind of make their own spots.
Yeah.
Right.
How many spots is it?
So eighty-six is what we're proposing.
Which is two less than last time?
We actually surveyed that again. There's seventy-seven existing. I thought we were matching the existing, which was our intent, but we're actually beating it by a few spaces, so.
Oh, okay.
Eighty-six, four, eighty-eight spots.
The last design was like, I wanted to say it was like eighty-eight, or?
The last one was seventy-seven. The existing is seventy-seven.
Well, the last design was seventy-seven. Oh.
The existing is seventy-seven.
Yeah.
The last design was eighty-six. This design is also eighty-six.
Oh, this, so same number of spots?
Same number, yeah.
So we are improving parking still, just not to the full capacity.
Yes. And this has not been passed, but I think it's been discussed that, I don't know all the parameters, but a twenty percent reduction in special use off-street parking is something that is the village, if I'm quoting that incorrectly, please correct me, Joel.
Close enough.
Yeah.
It's a transit-oriented development ordinance that allows for reduction in parking spaces. I think twenty percent is correct for being nearby the train station essentially. And that was brought up by one of the planning and zoning commissioners as a benefit.
Does that, do we hit the target then? If that were, if that were the ordinance, would we hit the?
We would.
We would?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not an ordinance yet.
That's an interesting, yeah, I know, it's an interesting note.
It's about, it's very close to being.
Maybe in March.
Approved.
A day before this one.
Yeah. Rescind that variation.
I don't know. Overall, I think the design is nice. I agree with you, Linda. Like, this is a big positive step forward. I was a little concerned coming in tonight about what some of the feedback was gonna be, so. My tone probably sounded a little bit more negative. I'm just trying to get past, like, the aesthetics.
A little argumentative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As soon as you said that, I was like, yeah, it probably sounded a little bit argumentative, and that wasn't really my intent, but I just, this balance of aesthetics and safety and aesthetics and, you know, whatever, and just like, at some point, we can't be completely aesthetically pleasing. We've gotta do certain things that might not be, but we could try to figure out how to make it aesthetically pleasing, like the whole, you know, different styles of fence and stuff. So I just, I get caught up in that, just, not even just with this, just in general, but, yeah, I think it's, I think it's positive.
I'll be clear, I am not proposing a fence around Big Ballpark. I'm not actually proposing that or supporting it. I'm just saying, I've seen.
It won't happen.
Not really the purview of this board.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure if the planning commissioner was listening to this, I was not about to like propose something.
That'd be a hard one.
What I will say is that the village has been very supportive from the administration to the arborists, to the public safety and planning and zoning, to give feedback and understand that, you know, there's some shared interests and some special conditions that the school district operates under, so they've been helpful through the process, so.
It's good here.
Going back to the front of the school and the existing playground now, you were saying one of the options is to leave it?
One option would be to leave it, maintain it, the equipment as it would need to be, or eliminate it.
And then figure out what other. Yeah, I guess it'd be, again, not having had children there, I don't know if there would be a need for two-play structures, or what the staff or teachers think would be better there.
Yeah, some preliminary feedback is that they will still use it for their youngest kindergarten, kindergarten first.
So yeah, it is kind of a young kid.
Probably needs to be somewhat updated, but again, we're looking forward to kind of digging in for more conversation with staff, but sort of very first, like, hey, do you really use it? Do you think you'd use it? Yes, the answer is yes. There's a, you know, structures around supervision and, but it's, you know, it's a large school, right? I mean, four hundred students, full-day kindergarten now, kindergarten kids needing more opportunity to get out and play too, so it probably does have some value, probably does need some upgrade.
Could we, we could replace the equipment without worrying about the trees, right? It's just doing anything else in that area.
Yeah, it would just be a maintenance, you know, replacing kind.
Cool.
Other comments and questions? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Ryan? Yeah, I don't know about you, but I'm really interested in hearing about the lockers.
Jim, I can share about the school maintenance grant and brief overview of locker replacement?
We applied for the maintenance grant, another fifty thousand dollar matching grant, and we were approved for it. We put in a project for lockers. So we would, to keep that money, we would need to spend a hundred thousand, you know, including that fifty, and we have about two and a half years to do it, so by the end of next summer.
Is this the same program that, I think we got fifty thousand for the, for the Hauser out of town?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, they did another round of them, so.
I think boards should like endorse the application to the grant, and then if we should move forward with this, because the estimated dollar amount for locker replacement was approximately what, Jim?
Two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah. So it's at a threshold that really the board would need to then approve it, so I wanted you to have some awareness of it. It does not seem like the most exciting thing that boards of education do, but.
It looks like the plan, though, would just be to replace some of the same amount of lockers.
Right.
So there's no way to, I don't, I don't know if that's still an issue.
Ryan, you did, Ryan did come over and count lockers, I believe, and he's working.
The exciting things that architects do.
Five hundred and eighty-four lockers?
How many times do you just have to start over?
We did, we did meet with the principal with April, talked about, you know, what was necessary, you know, what the current population of the school is, and and that's how we arrived at that number. So it's pretty much a one-for-one replacement. I think the lockers, as best we could tell, were replaced or installed in nineteen ninety, so that makes them about thirty years old. You know, I mean, it depends on how they're used, but it's a pretty good lifespan for a metal locker.
So, so the principal at Hauser didn't feel that we need more lockers? It's, that's a not?
No.
Okay.
No, I think so. So there, no, there's, there's been some added that are not recessed, you know, that I think have accounted for their population growth. And so some of those would remain.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. Okay.
Yeah.
Because I believe I had a child in Hauser when that population growth happened, and those lockers were, so those would continue to stay there? They wouldn't be replaced?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're kind of shuffling around a little bit, but those would remain, so a small number would remain, but then a larger number would be replaced, which would be those recessed ones in the main hallways.
Right.
And this does not need to go out to bid on its own, because it's already been competitively bid through the Illinois program for consolidated. It's essentially a menu of items that contractors have already bid on, and so that's how we get our pricing.
So this price is just based on that? Like, everybody gets that price? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
So what's there? I mean, is it breaking down, or I understand thirty years is a great lifespan, but is there a reason for the replacing it now, other than the program, or?
I mean, some of them are coming apart. Doors don't work, locks don't work. They don't have integrated locks, which is kind of a standard now. Dealing with locks and locks ending up in other places are a problem, so that makes good sense. And then, you know, some of them, again, are coming apart, so there's sharp edges that are out. And then just kind of general feedback hearing from the school of how they operate doesn't sound like they operate well.
So I guess there's one upgrade there of the integrated combination locks. I mean, is there anything else? I don't know. In thirty years of lockers had a
Pretty much the same.
Increase in technology?
Maybe an extra hook, but, you know, hat rack, but they're pretty much the same, yeah. Probably a better operation in terms of, you know, a continuous piano hinge versus the hinge that they probably have now, so a little bit more durable, but pretty much the same.
Maybe forty years with this head.
Maybe.
Another board's decision.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we have, not have to because of the program, but there's a need to fix this, and we've got.
It's a good idea. We're at that point. We've got the grant, but, Jim, thank you.
I'm sure middle schoolers are not the most gentle. I know how I treated my locker. Thirty years of.
So it's okay if that lasts us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we would vote, would we vote on it at the February board meeting? Do you have to vote on the co-op?
No, the only, the only thing that I would say is, we looked at the quote, steel prices are a little volatile, so they don't hold that quote for very long. So we'll refresh that quote and make sure it hasn't changed. And then, you know, whatever process we need to go through, we would just, you know, sign off on it, and then they would start production. And that would be, we would have to check and make sure that they can still get it done for the summer. That would be one key thing that we'll have to find out, that we can update you on. So.
So are these, are they available locally, or fabricated locally, or leased in the US, or are they?
They are in the US. I want to say Wisconsin, might be Minnesota, but they're fairly, they're regional. They do have a program where if you can get in now, they will store them for you for free and build them now, because they get so much business during the summer that they're not able to handle it. So it behooves them to build them now, store them, and then just be able to install them right away. So that's the program that we would look to be a part of. We just need to make sure that it's available now and the pricing is the same.
Yeah, I didn't look at the date on this. This is over a month old.
What's like the disposal process like of all of these lockers?
I don't know. It would go to a scrapyard, and they'd melt it down, and it becomes steel beams.
Yeah. I mean, the nice, the nice part about the co-op is
One of the biggest.
The provider provides all of the demolition, the removal, the install, the product as well, so it's, you know, seamless for the district. You know, without the, it's been pre-bid, so you're satisfying all the bidding requirements.
I mean, I would think not, but I know sometimes when we move stuff around, we're surprised by what we find behind it or underneath it. Like, these are just, you know, external structures, so we shouldn't have any types of.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't. There's, we did take a look at them. We surveyed, there is a little bit of.
Along the main, yeah, like a main water line.
They're, they're the same size lockers, so we're not proposing anything deeper or wider, so it should be a pretty easy removal and install. There is a wood fascia board on top that would need to be removed. We would do a new metal piece to cover the gap between the locker and the wall. But that's pretty straightforward, so we don't, we wouldn't expect any unforeseen conditions.
Might find some fun treasures or stuff that fell behind lockers, or notes, or, I don't know.
I'm sure they'll find stuff.
Money, or, I don't know. Some piece of history.
So there's no objections with moving forward with this plan?
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Ryan.
It's a color in there now, blue, navy?
They're blue. Almost, not quite the color of what's.
Or are they just light? I thought they were like, well, I was thinking they were like that.
In between. I looked at them last meeting.
I have a vague recollection of two weeks ago when you were there.
I looked at them.
I would have sworn they were gray. Next time, I'll just have to stare for a couple minutes.
All right. Thanks, Joel. Next up is Policy Committee.
Yeah, okay. I know this looks perhaps a little bit more daunting than it is, but it's actually not that bad, these sections. So what, if you recall, what we did was take press plus update one-ten and divide it up by section. So tonight is just the first reading of sections two through five. I wasn't gonna necessarily go through every single one. I was just going to identify some of the policies that I think have more significant updates or changes. And as always, if you all have questions or things that you identified or pointed out during this first read, that would be great to hear. So the first section that we looked at is section two, which governs Board of Education, and there were some fairly significant changes in some of these policies. Also, just so you know, review and monitoring is the new definition for five-year updates. That's what they are now calling that.
That's what I was, I was gonna ask you that, because when I went through it, it looked like there was really.
Yeah, that's like their new.
They're all kind of jumbled together. They used to be in different sections before.
Four, five-year, for five-year updates. But the biggest one, the biggest changes in section two really have to do with two-one-hundred, the board member conflict of interest policy. The General Assembly this passed legislation this year impacting school board, you know, elections and ethics, and made what they refer to as significant changes to the statement of economic interest that we all filed by May one. I have a feeling we all saw this last time, because everybody was like, it's changed, and you guys have filed it for years. So I think it's just now codified, like, in policy, but I think we've seen the change already. And I know that they reference that there's, you know, like webinars and stuff available if anybody wanted to watch it that needed more understanding on the changes. But I think we've all now gone through these, this changed statement of economic interest. I just think it's now made its way into the press updates. The other really bigger update in section two has to do with two-two-ten, the organizational board of education meeting. It actually works really well in our favor, because they extended the timeframe in which boards must hold its organizational meeting from twenty-eight days after the election to forty. So as you know, we've typically had to change around that May meeting usually to meet that, and now we're fine. So I think our regular business meeting.
Regular May meeting.
May meeting would serve as the reorg meeting, and this was effective, this is already effective, so. Plus, these need to be voted on by March thirtieth anyway, which would be before our May meeting, so we'd be fine. Yeah, so I think those are the main or most significant changes to the section two updates that we identified. Were there any questions or anything else?
I actually had a question on, I think it's policy two-one-oh-five.
Ethics and gift ban.
I think it's towards the end. I wondered if this was like a bad copy paste. It seemed like there was a pretty extraneous section at the end.
Which one, Dan?
Uh, I've just lost it. I think it's two-one-oh-five.
This one really just established the gift ban for school, like, guidance counselors?
Right, I think if you get to the end of it, then all of a sudden, kind of out of nowhere, it talks about sexual harassment, which didn't seem to fit. Maybe it does, maybe it's there on purpose. It just seemed kind of out of the field.
Complaints of, oh, I see what you mean. Complaints of sexual harassment made against board members by elected officials.
I think it's because of the ethics.
Because I think all that has also, be from faith's law.
Kathy, does it look like that section should be there? I think that is.
It is there.
But I think it's been, it's been there. That doesn't look.
There's no change to it. I think it's, maybe it's just a
That's been there, yeah.
Coupling of possibly things that just don't make sense necessarily just put together.
I was wondering, because I swear that's covered in another policy elsewhere, isn't it?
It is. They did rename, yeah, they did rename one, and it is referenced elsewhere.
I think the law is also so broad on that issue that it really does touch.
Yeah, like a lot of updates because of faith's law, et cetera. Just to update, like, best practices or.
Okay, well, if it's supposed to be, then that's fine. Yeah. I also had a question on forty-one-forty?
Two.
I think she's still in section two.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I have not.
All right, well, we'll let you get to that then.
Forty-one-forty. Oh, waiver of, oh, yeah, we can talk, we talked about the fee ones. Okay, so that was two. There's a random one from three that was review and monitoring, which is general school administration. It's unchanged, so it was just up for five-year review. Three-ten, which I think everybody read at some point in January. Maybe you perused it, but there are no changes to it, so. Just one of the random ones that was in there. And then, yeah, section four, which deals with operational services, I believe it is. So the first one that did have some pretty significant changes, at least on the webinar I attended, is four-ten, so fiscal and business management. So the policy, more than just footnotes, et cetera, the policy itself was updated, requiring districts to disclose cash reserve balance of funds and related to their operational levy at the public hearings, et cetera. So Jim? hearings, et cetera. So Jim read this one, and I don't know, Jim, if you have any comments, but from what I understand, we are already doing this.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, or Finance Committee.
Yeah, I mean, that's, after reading, it sounds like you.
That is what we are doing. So we're good on that one. That raised a lot of kind of questions at the webinar, but when I brought it to Martha and Jim explained it, we're, we're good on that. The other one that you referenced or that you had a question about, oh, wait, I'm sorry, before that, where's the, the use of credit card ones, four five five, did that come before? I'm out of order, sorry.
It's right after, it's right after.
Right after fiscal business.
But it's just an update.
Yeah, it's just an update. So that one, Martha, we talked about the amounts, just making sure those amounts were still okay and that they hadn't, you know, everybody's spending, et cetera. So we agreed that those amounts still felt like acceptable amounts. We didn't need to increase those. So the $500 in a single purchase and no more than 1,000 within a given month without prior authorization. So Martha and I just discussed, does that still seem, if I think about my own, like, spending limit on my work credit card, like, it's, you know, changed a little over the years, but that still worked otherwise. So no, no updates. So the waiver of student fees, so Martha, we discussed this. I don't know if you wanted to provide an update in regards to how we, what we do about fines specifically.
Right. So we don't, we really don't have fines for, for anything. I double-checked with Jim and with, you know, Nancy Schuerman, et cetera. We don't fine parents. The, there's some detail about communication around the, you know, the waiver options. That's already in our communication. So I think we're, we're good with the, the policy changes that are noted here. There is the one about the active-duty military personnel. And I think actually Mahela, Jim's assistant, was making some changes to some of our documents related to that.
And it's not just, yeah, active duty. It's active duty plus the 200% of the poverty line. So, you know, I don't know. Perhaps we do have people in our district that, that fall under kind of both those. It's not an either or. And then, yeah, they added the homeless children and youth. Just surprised that was never in there to begin with. But I don't know what your question was, Dan, if it was in regards to these fines.
It sounds like that question is answered. We don't really have fines, but it's, there's some things that were changed due to law. What was it, like fines due to a lost equipment?
Lost school property.
Lost school property. And then, but then they were imposing a second one for damage of property. I just, I, I don't know if we've ever had that situation. I just really seemed strange that, well, wait, if there's a student causing damage, we would like automatically waive that? Or just that didn't seem to make sense. I mean, it would make more sense if you would say, you know, if the superintendent's discretion, it could be waived.
Yeah. I'm just saying, like, damage to school property, the one that we've had some discussion is when there's damage to a technology. And yet, this board, different members at the time, but when one-to-one technology was adopted, there was very clear messaging around not fining and not charging families anything extra because we had made the determination to.
For them. Some of them may not have chosen to, yeah, utilize.
It's definitely been going around in the, like, within tech direct, you know, because, because all districts handle it a little bit different. A lot of districts, there are fees and fines and so forth. And, and it was, yeah, when I first came on board, it was the philosophy of the board that it was a program that the district decided to go with. And so, as not to push it upon the, the families.
Do we see a lot of repetitive damage?
At times, but then it's treated more as on the behavioral side of things, where it's more of a building level. It's turned over. And, and staff are very, you know, very well aware of when those things happen, because if you have a student who continually, something's wrong with their device, and it's not something where it's a lemon device or something that we would just replace, or if they tend to be damaged at certain times of the year, which we do see that at certain times of the year, or like over a long break, we know that, for instance, after this past break, we knew that, that first week of school, we were going to have a spike in broken screens or, you know, things that, that are going to happen over the course of just having them in their possession for a couple of weeks, you know, not bringing them back and forth to work, to school.
I think technology is the thing that you hear about getting damaged, sometimes intentionally, sometimes unintentionally, but, you know, other things like damage to a desk, you know, it's just, it's a very infrequent occurrence where I can, I can't even think of anecdotes right now.
And with a lot of the stuff that we get over the years, given our cycle and, you know, every year with eighth grade, we have a, we get an influx of devices that aren't ready to be retired. They can be reused as spares. If we get some that are kind of damaged beyond use, we still strip them for parts. So even a lot of the, even a lot of the repairs that we do are really kind of a zero-cost repair. From a part standpoint, it's really just time, which is, you know, just part of the workday for our tax.
So the loss of technology or technology that's coming up repeatedly broken is not really a big cost to the district?
No, you know, it's, you know, again, it's kind of the cost of doing business of, you know, just keeping things up. And really, for the most part, our students take really good care of the devices. There's accidents that do happen. Sometimes very difficult to distinguish an accident between anything that's intentional. So it's really more on, if you have a level of kind of recidivism of things happening continually with, with a particular student, where then it's, it's really treated more as, you know, what else is going on here? Is it behavioral or so forth? And we also, if we, if we have students that, you know, if, if there is a lot of repeat, you know, things, then, you know, if they do get a replacement, they don't, they don't always get a brand new one. You know, there's, you know, now we're using into our spares and, and so we address it that way as well.
I think the intention of the policy is to make sure that nobody's being denied education based on inability to pay for something. And it feels like we are living that already. So. Yeah, I would, I would think the biggest change for us is just more on the fee waiver side in addition now to the free and reduced lunch and other reasons that we've talked about being eligible for certain fee waivers. They've now added these two other subs, subs.
What I'm hearing is we don't have any fines to waive, so it's kind of moot. So if we ever did institute a fine schedule, then this would apply to.
Guide it, right. Although, I do think there's strong language around, you know, returning chargers, et cetera. Perhaps there's language around possibility of being fined. I returned it, Donna. That charger came back.
Do I believe library books and maybe charger?
Actually, I was going to bring it up, Stephanie, but after.
I found it. It was in my office.
I mean, we really just want, I mean, there is.
I thought you were joking.
There is.
But there was, but there was like language sent home that it's like, hey.
Yeah, we, we just want them back. And, and we're actually going to start next year with, we'll actually be putting asset tags on our chargers. So we can start tracking, well, how many are we actually going?
Yeah, I mean, they have their names, but they peel them off.
But even in, even the same holds true with the chargers, is that as we retire devices, it's not like we're disposing of the chargers that, you know, we keep them because we keep them as spares. So we do build up a fair amount of spares. We did have some transition types of chargers over the past couple of years, but as, over the next couple of years, we'll continue to build up our, you know, the USB C type chargers that are now more standard across devices.
So we don't have issues with people not, like, returning things like Chromebooks or iPhones?
No, there are, there are incident, I mean, there are, you know, there are instances where sometimes people move and they don't return before they move or, but, I mean, we've had, we've had devices, you know, returned via, via UPS, you know, over the summer that, well, we moved and, oh, we found a Chromebook. And even in the instances where students, I mean, we do have a level to which students have lost devices. And, but, and then they, for the most part, they tend to find them. Eventually, they, they find them, so.
Thank you. And I don't know if there's any other questions on that one. Four one six five is probably the one you were thinking of, Dan, that specifically talks about child sexual abuse. And similarly, a lot of updates because of faith's law. So that's just the language was updated to include like the code of professional conduct language. So, yeah, that is all of four. And then that takes us to five, which deals with personnel. Specifically, I think the biggest one is the one that was, well, one was renamed and rewritten. So again, because, I believe, all because of faith's law. So they're all kind of coming together, various policies that touch upon that area of law. So that's five one twenty. That one was rewritten and the title was updated. And then the other ones that are significant, but we thought, you know, beneficial to us is five two twenty with regards to substitute teachers. This kind of helps us with the extra days, allowing substitute teachers, licensed ones, to teach for a period not to exceed 120 days rather than the former 90 days. And then similarly for like short-term subs from, up from five to 15. So I think, Martha, we've said, we've been in situations where maybe we've come up.
Yeah, and you know, the 120 days is another interesting one, like, I think that went into effect now it's being codified.
Oh, because maybe we've already had to have that.
And that is a nice.
Little benefit. Obviously, there's so much right now with substitutes and shortage of subs, et cetera. So it makes sense to, to do that. And then five two fifty with regards to leaves of absence, also has a board question, which we can, we can discuss, but the answer's fairly straightforward. But this one, again, now starts to put into the policies, the language about the COVID sick days for teachers and returning sick days used during the 21, 22 school years for fully vaccinated teachers, et cetera. So all of that that we kind of lived through now making its way into our policy. And the board question specifically asks if we require our fully vaccinated employees to participate in district-wide COVID testing, COVID-19 testing program. And the answer is no, we do not require our fully vaccinated. So that is the default and that's how we would answer that. No real recommendation. It's just what it is, actually, that's what it is.
So it's fully vaccinated defined anywhere, or is it just assumed to be two initial doses?
Yeah, that's been an interesting question all along in terms of the legal definition that it has been assumed to be the two doses, not the boosters. But, but again, if you're vaccinated, really almost any level, you don't participate in the COVID testing.
Yeah, that's what I understood it at the, the two. Kind of see if there were any, any other large updates. I don't really have anything else from section five that I was gonna talk about unless there were other questions that came up.
It might be too early to have heard this on the policy side, but has there been any commentary about the number of policies that are no longer enforced because of the soon-to-be-canceled emergency declarations?
Well, some of the substitute teacher stuff has language in regards to that. But no, they keep saying, like, it just, you know, it was extended through, it keeps getting extended every 30 days, you know, and I don't know at what point they, July.
There was an announcement that it was till May 11th. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, but this one specifically says, it's the leave of absence one, right, the paid administrative leave during any time when the governor has declared a disaster due to the public health emergency. So when, it's my understanding is when the disaster proclamation that has ended, that these COVID sick days go away. But, and I think the wording of the policy would say that. I am going to have a sunlight conversation with Shelley tomorrow. So.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out how to ask that question.
And I was just with that in mind. But I guess the language was saying there for any future emergency declaration.
There's a lot of language in recent policy that came from the state legislature that talks about, here's things you need to do because of a declared emergency. But now this declared emergency is going to be declared over or has been pre-declared that it's done on May 11.
That finally has an end date.
Just like that.
I, I'm putting a lot of commentary into my tongue.
Any, what questions do we have or after first read, feeling okay about two through five and the board?
No questions.
So then I believe the plan is for the ones that we just did the first read at our February regular business meeting, they would become action items, correct, Martha?
Right. We would put this section February board meeting, get them approved, then March.
And then March Cow will do six through seven, which are probably, will necessitate more conversation as they relate to curriculum specifically. And then, yeah, they kind of do by March 30th. So we are on time with the whole update. That's it.
All right, next up is Finance Committee.
So I don't have much of an update, but I just wanted to go back to the audit. You know, we've just completed the audit. One thing that I think wasn't stressed, but I just would like to bring up here is I know there was talk that we moved money from into the capital fund, 3.9 million, and we put in 200,000 in reserves. I should just point out that we actually, this past year, we had 4.1 million that we could have put in reserves, not the 200,000. We took 3.9 million, put it in capital. So I just want people to know that we did run, again, a significant surplus into this. And so that we put the money into a capital because we have got a lot of capital products coming down. So I don't know if that, if people caught that, but I just wanted to point that out. So.
So that, the 3.9, that wasn't from one year, correct?
No, that was for last year.
But it's just from one year?
So we actually had 4.1 million in excess revenues last year. And so we put 3.9 million into capital for that. So we only ended up, quote unquote, technically putting in 200,000 into the reserves. Any questions or?
They'll pay for half our projects.
Yeah, exactly.
Based on some of the others. Or maybe not, depending on.
All right, depending on the fact.
I guess it would be interesting to hear if that's, because I, I know that expenses had been reduced previously during, during the emergency declaration. I didn't know if any much of, how much of that is hangover from that, or if that's anticipated, that similar surpluses would continue going forward.
Jim, just this question of the surplus, sorry, David, you probably can answer it. How much of that, is there a sense that that may have still been unspent money because of the pandemic? Really, that's from last year, which was a pretty normal year in terms of, like, we were running all our.
Nothing in particular. And I know this year that we had a, hold that kindergarten, so all things being the same, we'd expect a lower number.
Yeah, because what, we had a nine FTE personnel, I think, with the kindergarten, and we had specials and psychologists, et cetera.
I think, well, I went back over five years.
Yeah, no, we, we. Yeah, we've been adding about that almost, I mean, pretty consistently. I do remember seeing that graph. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it was. Right. So we, we have been pulling significant reserves in past several years.
There was an interesting comment at, I was going to save this for the next board meeting. Martha and I went to the Ed Red thing and I went to, we both attended the legislative thing, which was not quite as engaging as I was hoping. But there were three senators representatives there and one of them was on the budgeting and finance, I don't know, our state version of the Ways and Means Committee, I guess. And apparently, he had spent years trying to fix some of the formulaic stuff or something. And he made the, he made a comment based on some questions or whatever. And they changed the formula so that it was like this whole thing of you have to ask for the maximum because if you don't, then you're not going to ever get it again. And so apparently, they have changed the formula this past year so that, yeah, so that you can ask for whatever you want and that does not predicate you to be stuck with that in the future. And I don't really, I don't fully understand, like, all that stuff. But like, if you want to ask for five, we could, I'm just thinking, like, if we do have, if we have 4 million left over and we just said, you know, one year, we wanted to ask for zero theoretically, we could still ask for five the next year. I don't know all the ins and outs on that. I don't know if you've gotten much information. I don't know if you've gotten much information on that, Jim. I just, it was interesting and I'm just like.
It was interesting to hear because that's something that always seemed, just seemed right.
Yeah, and that was his thing is like everybody's always saying, well, we do this because of the state. He's like, so I have made it so that you don't have to do it because of the state anymore. My first thought was how well have you communicated that to people in your state?
I think if you, if you want to lose all the future money from that, you do it one way. But if you just want to do it one time, you would do it simple, you would give a refund in a sense, as opposed to lowering what you asked for. Once you lower it, then you've lost that piece. And so it sounds like they're trying to fix that.
Sounds like they did fix it. I mean, he was pretty adamant that you, like that has been changed and I don't know. That might be. So Dave, just to throw that one at you, I don't know if that's of interest to you, but.
That is.
It was a very short conversation, so we didn't get into a lot of detail, but I was just like, hmm, okay. It's like counter to everything I've ever been told, but also not a state policy wonk either, so.
Can he come here and do a talk for us on it?
Maybe. Where is he from? Arlington Heights? He was from, he represents Arlington Heights and Rollin Meadows.
It wasn't on the board then, it seems like several years ago, a board did, like they paused it or they didn't ask for the maximum one year and the business manager at the time was just adamant, I think Costco was getting ready to open or something like that, like you can't do that again. You know, you'll, you'll miss all this revenue going forward.
Yeah, and I've heard that in different pockets and stuff like that. I don't really know how it all works, so I thought I would share that in case you're interested in digging.
No, I am.
That's very interesting. All right, thanks David. Then next is education.
Yeah, education committee, we'll ask Angela to come up. I think she has a goal one update to share. Good evening. I do have a few things I just wanted to share about goal one with everybody. So as you may recall, we evaluate our curriculum resources in cycles. And so last year we had evaluated the K-five elementary curriculum resource, adopted iReady mathematics, classroom mathematics for implementation to this year. This year, you know, we're working on science curriculum resource review, SEL curriculum resource review. And then I am meeting, going to be meeting with the six-eight math teachers to ensure that that resource is meeting their needs. I have no reason to think it's not, but want to make sure we're doing our due diligence with that. So I wanted to make sure the board's aware that next year we will enter a K-five DLA curriculum resource review. Currently, the kindergarten through fifth grade students utilize benchmark advance at kindergarten and then at first and fifth, we utilize Ready Gen for our ELA instruction. So we'll review if that's meeting our needs and if it's not meeting our needs in the way that we need it to, then we'll restart to review other curriculum resources next So then with this year's science curriculum review, the original goal had been to bring a recommendation to the board next month for possible, a possible vote at the March board meeting. But we're actually going to extend that timeline. We're still doing work at looking at different science resources. And so it's, I'm projecting that will be coming to the board in May for a recommendation, for a vote, coming to the board at the May Cal with a recommendation to be then voted on at the May board meeting. Standards-based grading and reporting is also part of goal one of our strategic plan. We have been working as a committee, we started working as a committee last year, continuing into this year. The committee is doing a lot of research, a lot of work on understanding the importance of standards-based reporting and then the direction we need to go as a district. We started introducing just level-setting information to the staff at a after-school professional learning session on January twenty-third. We're gonna come back on March sixth for some more level-setting with our staff members about why we are looking at standards-based reporting, how we see the importance of standards-based reporting. And then we'll begin working as a committee on prioritizing standards and aligning our common assessments to the standards so that as we continue to move forward, we're using common assessments that are aligned to our standards and not just aligned to curriculum resources, but showing where the curriculum resources are addressing which standards so that we're again reporting on those standards. Our timeline continues to be that we'll continue committee work this year and sharing out with our staff members. Next school year, we will continue that committee work, continue staff education and begin that standards alignment process with our common assessments. And then during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we'll begin working on family education while continuing with staff education for a projected rollout of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year of standards-based reporting. And then full-day kindergarten, I continue to meet monthly with our kindergarten teachers so that we can discuss the successes, problem-solve any challenges and talk about any other pieces that I should be aware of. And so they continue just to sing the praises of the additional time. One of the things that we talked about this past month was that all the kindergarten teams just appreciate being able to fill a full part of the school climate and culture. So for instance, with half-day kindergarten, they weren't able to have like a thirty-minute SEL block. So they did their smaller block, but the school would have a thirty-minute block and now all of them are able to be a part of their school's SEL blocks, which for some schools are set at the same time of day, so they're able to be a part of that whole SEL time. They see, they've seen a benefit in writing instruction. They see a difference already from when they were teaching half-day kindergarten to now full-day kindergarten and what kids are able to do with their handwriting. The letters are forming, the sentences that they're, kindergarten sentences that they're starting to write. But they see that because they're able to devote more time to handwriting instruction now, they've seen their kids advance in writing faster than they were in a half-day program. We also talked about the KPI for looking at kindergarten growth and if how full-day kindergarten is impacting kindergarten growth. And so for the strategic plan, what I had come to the board with for using key performance indicator was the kids' assessment that we do for the state. Currently, we assess, we use the kids' assessment to assess in the fall at the fortieth day and that's a state requirement. Every district has to do the fortieth day reporting. And that's to see who are the kids you're getting at, into your school at that beginning of the year. It's not really talking about how instruction has impacted them, just who you're getting. And so what I had looked at us doing was looking at implementing the kids' assessment three times a year, fall, winter, spring, so we could see the growth from fall to spring. In talking with the kindergarten teachers about that KPI, they brought up some very valid concerns. And the most valid concern is that the kids' assessment takes a lot of time for observational data already just for the fortieth day reporting in the fall. And so the concern is that we've given this gift of time with full-day kindergarten, but they would spend most of that time, if we implemented this three times a year, doing observational checklists. So walking around with clipboards, checking off if students have mastered this skill or where they're at on a continuum for this skill, where they're at on a continuum for another skill. And it skills, like some of the social emotional ones might be from beginning earlier to integrating later since continuum. So they would look at how a student shares or how a student might invite another student to play with them. So they, the kindergarten team and I talked a lot about that and they, you know, felt that we would be taking away some of that gift of instructional time because it would be being used more to assess. So we talked about FastBridge and how that actually would be a better indicator to show growth. We have historical data from FastBridge, we don't have historical data from kids, which is what we were waiting for, was to use, determine the baseline next year, where we could actually, I am actually working with Don Mike to determine the baseline for FastBridge with our FastBridge data. Just looking at our winter benchmarking data from this year compared to last year, we have seen growth. So last year at kindergarten, using our MTSS data, which is FastBridge, we had in reading eleven students that were considered tier three, so that's our most intensive level of support. And we had thirteen students that were tier two, and actually that's in the fall of twenty-two, the school year. Thirteen students that were tier two. Now, checking in at winter, we have had a net loss of four students. So we went from twenty-four to twenty students who are receiving MTSS services. Our tier-three students dropped from eleven to seven from fall to winter. And our tiers-two students stayed at thirteen, the number at thirteen. But we had, of those tier-two kiddos, of those thirteen, three of them were kids that were already tier two, so they stayed at tier two. And one was a kiddo who was at tier one and now needs support, that we've noticed. So already we can see from FastBridge data, growth from our half-day program and just feel that FastBridge data would be a better KPI than utilizing the kids' data. So I will be updating the goal for that by removing the kids' data and implementing the FastBridge data shortly. So that's my goal one update, any questions?
Did anybody find any objections to the change to the KPI for kindergarten?
No.
No.
Okay. No, we discussed this at the education committee meeting last week and Sherry and I both were like, if, if our teachers are telling you, telling us that this is not a good use of their time, then I think we should follow their lead on that, so.
I think that, and you agree that that's.
Yes, yes.
Just because they say it's not like.
No, right, 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 no, that was, that was an assumption, like assumed, yes, yeah.
I'm just curious, I don't, I'm not, I don't, that's fine if that's what you want to do. What takes so long? Like map testing is a whole week, so is it like every day for a week? Like how, you have, I'm just, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to articulate this clearly. So we doubled the time of kindergarten by doing full day. Not all of that time is observation, so I'm just kind of curious, like what is it, like, I can appreciate it being intensive, but like what is, what is the process look like?
So the process, right now with the forty-day implementation, we measure fourteen measures. So there are fourteen things for anywhere between our small kindergarten classes, about fourteen kids, our larger kindergarten class is about twenty-two, twenty-three kids. So teachers go and they have on a clipboard everybody's name and then whatever measure they're looking at that time. And they're looking at from day one to day forty, how kids are doing on a certain skill.
This is a forty-day. I thought on day forty, you were making, this is a thirty-day.
Right, no, this is over the course of one day, one to forty.
Okay.
How are they doing? And then if they move on the chart, like you notice during center time that a kiddo now is establishing patterns. And so before you had them at beginning early, well, now they've moved to beginning middle, so you get your clipboard and you gotta check it off there.
Okay.
And that's for fourteen different measures. Going to three times a year, also, it's a great question you ask because it also increases the measures from fourteen to twenty-nine. So now you're doing twenty-nine separate measures for your fourteen to twenty-two students, which means you're now looking for twenty-nine different things over the course of a time.
That makes total sense.
Yeah. I know when she explained that.
Yeah. I was thinking it was like map testing, I'm like, it's two hours.
And I'm glad you, just like you asked Joel, I was asking, I didn't know how to phrase that question because it was like going.
Why is it more?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense, but now.
I appreciate the question, because yes, that is an important.
So it's forty days for twenty kids on the whole checklist and then you would do that for, so it's, if there's only twenty days in a month, let's say, that's two months, three times a, I mean, that's like the whole school year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, it makes sense.
And it's increasing the measures from fourteen to now looking for twenty-nine different things. And we have to report on every measure. You can't leave any blank.
So I'm gonna say this, I appreciate your ambition and I appreciate the challenge you do. No, that makes total sense, so I'm good.
Angela, go.
Two things, one, which I think I just forgot, FastBridge, what, what does FastBridge do for you?
FastBridge measures for us from kindergarten through fifth grade, we do all students, tier, all students at a tier one level and then we look at their percentages on these different assessments, I'll explain in a second. And then for sixth or eighth grade, we use FastBridge for our tier-two and tier-three kids. We, FastBridge assesss math skills, math foundational skills and literacy foundational skills. And at every grade level, it's a little bit different. So at kindergarten, we're looking at maybe a letter identification, beginning sounds, ending sounds, being able to combine letters, combine sounds to make words, where at second grade, we're looking at how students are reading. In math, at a primary level, we might be looking at number identification, patterns and counting. And then as they get older, we're looking at basic addition facts, multiplication facts, division facts and their fluency and automaticity rates.
Fair to say it's like meant to be sort of a quick check?
Yes.
A short assessment on very discrete skills that are expected at that grade level. So it gives you that, that check-in information.
So you're entering these assessments into FastBridge for a given child? And then FastBridge allows you to compare that information across multiple years?
And it's nationally normed, so we're looking at like percentage. We not only, we look at composite scores, which we can also see where they fall in a national normed percentage, much like you see for map testing.
Much with map. Now, this was, I did remember both ideas. You said that if you did the three times a year, you're then forced into twenty-nine different assessments and you can't deviate from that. So is it that the program just won't accept a blank and then it blows up or?
The state dings you. So they'll end up dinging you on the state report card. We have to explain why kids didn't have a rating for different measures and then you lose participation points. And so right now, they just do that for us on the fortieth day, but if we were to go over the course of three times a year, they would look at that.
Okay, so essentially their criteria are incredibly fixed and non-malleable, which is not helpful to our end goal.
No.
Fair enough. And I echo what Wesley said, using your time more effectively is good.
Thank you.
So then it would be the kids' assessment's still in the fall because have to do that within a fortieth day? And then it'd be FastBridge twice after that?
It'll be FastBridge, fall, winter, spring.
Also, you still would have to do it, FastBridge in the fall in addition to kids' assessment.
And you already do that. Right. That's what we currently do.
But now that's what will be used for the KPI measure.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
And then I think we had a quick goal core.
Yeah, just a quick update from me, about family and community partnerships. Actually, we have our meeting tomorrow, so just thought I'd share the agenda, it's kind of a preview rather than a review. Continuing to think about the family engagement survey data we have, so this group will dig into that a little bit more. That's really kind of the main focus of our meeting. An interesting article that I realized actually links then all the way through Board Book too, just really thinking about, this is about family engagement compared to family involvement, right? And there are families that are very engaged in their children's educational process but don't have time to be maybe as actively involved due to other outside commitments. This particular article is about a teacher that's like busy teaching other people's kids and worrying about being a good parent for her own children. So it's just kind of, I think, a good reflective, and it's something we're talking a lot about with this committee and with our teachers in general. You know, good partnership really certainly takes valuing parents in the challenging situations that they may be facing and certainly setting up also opportunities for them to be engaged, but with the understanding of how complicated that can be. So I can share more after the meeting, but wanted you to have that agenda as a preview.
Any questions about it?
And that's it for education committee then.
Okay.
I think five essentials went out too, right? That is a more recent.
Five essentials went out. We kind of talked about that some, we actually, Wesley and I went to the Ames PTA meeting today, talked a little bit about that also, that I think to be very clear, I think the family engagement surveys feels more meaningful to our principals, to our committee, to our teams. Five essentials is still required. Five essentials does take staff, students and parent input, so I don't know, for whatever reason, it just feels overly cumbersome, I think, to parents who take it as well as to all of us trying to make good sense.
There's just not enough nuance to it. It's just never really, you know, you're fitting a square peg into a round hole.
Yeah, I haven't looked at now on the inside, I, you know, I should go take it.
It's a long window too, it's like January to March or something.
And you know, if there's not a twenty percent threshold, whether to do the.
The data.
So maybe we need more strongly worded reminders to take action. Yes.
I did, I did razz Mr. German a little bit today about I can expect the frequent reminders. He does a day, a weekly email every week, it's gonna be in there, say a little blurb, so I'm gonna see that every week until it closes.
And I think I get one, I don't know if it's once a day, once a week. I get a lot of, like, Riverside percentages, you know, they don't change dramatically. Until the day our staff takes it, then there's always.
But I know the teachers carve out time for the students to take it.
We carve out time at a professional development for them to take, we carve out time for the kids.
The kids, yeah.
All right. Anything else? Or have we gone to personnel yet? Maybe you haven't, sorry.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't.
I'm sorry, then we'll go to personnel.
Yeah, so the only, the only real thing to bring up today is, like Martha said, we went to the Ames PTA meeting. The PTA president had asked us to join at our last week's meeting, I think of us. And we, Martha just kind of gave an overview of some of the things that were going on here. Some of them we talked about tonight. And there, we just asked for some feedback on like the hot lunch stuff. At the PTA, PTO monthly meeting, we just, I brought that up, just to say if you could gather feedback. We're trying to just make an assessment, make an informed assessment of kind of how the community is feeling about that and stuff. So I talked a little bit about that today. I want to say, I forgot my piece of paper. I want to say there were nine or 10 parents there, or something like that, so it wasn't huge. I think Deanna was telling me, they were all board, all PTA board members except for two, but at least it's, it's a broader group. Generally, not, you know, nobody was jumping up and down with joy, but four or five people did very clearly say, they, two of them specifically have kids at Hauser, Hauser, and I've heard this, I might have heard this from some of you all. But the lines, just the lines in general, yes, I know Sherry's brought it up. I've heard it from other families I've talked to that have kids at Hauser or had kids at Hauser, that just, a lot of them don't participate because the line is so long, then they, by the time they get food, they can't eat. So we just kind of talked about the consulting contract and like what that's designed to do, and we're, we're sure that Quest will probably bring some recommendations on, maybe, maybe even fix that this year, and then kind of talk about what else they could do if we choose to move forward with some kind of a program. There was some verbal, like, yeah, that would be a really good idea. We think people would do it. So still just kind of like pushing to make sure we get feedback, so that we have as much information as possible for May, or whenever it is that Quest comes in and kind of gives us their little report out, and we decide what we want to do. So, other than that, not much else.
All right, now anything else?
No.
Okay, is there any additional public comment?
There is none.
All right, and future meeting dates is February 15th, 15th this year. I remember it was Valentine's Day last year, I think. 15th, 2023 regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. March 1st, 2023 is Committee of the Whole Meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room of Ames School. March 15th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00. And if there is nothing else, we got seven minutes to nine. No?
I'm good.
Bring something else up.
If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.